Welcome everyone to the Town of Wells Planning Board Meeting for Monday, August 18th. The first item this evening will be to review the minutes of August 4th. Did anyone have any questions, additions, deletions, or corrections to page one? Two? Three? Four? Five? Or six? Or seven? No, six, excuse me. Hearing none, I entertain a motion to accept the minutes as written.
Do I make the motion have a question?
Sure.
It says Tina was excused, but has she resigned prior to that?
Yes. Yes.
We didn't recognize the resignation till the end of the meeting.
Okay.
So I left, just the way it was.
Okay, make a motion to accept as written. Second? Second, all those in favor? That is unanimous. The next items on the agenda this evening are public hearings. How we conduct our public hearings is we allow the applicant to come forward, tell us, the people at home and the people present, what they propose to do. Once the applicant is done with their presentation, you can question the applicant through the board. So the first, then there will be no further discussions on that project this evening. We will workshop them or talk about them, but the public hearings, once they're closed, that's the end. First one is Barack Kimball Estates subdivision amendment. You didn't bring your laptop?
That's how you guys might forget about that.
You just reminded me. For the record, tell everybody who you are.
My name's Corlin Holloway, 760 Wire Road. I'm proposing to put a second single-family dwelling unit in my backyard for retired parents. So that is the scope of the project, you can see up there. It's a little under six acres, and so there's space for a second dwelling. So it was surveyed by Horizons, we're making sure that we follow setbacks and all of that, so. That's the goal, that's what we're proposing.
Thank you. Any question from any members of the audience? Please come up to the podium, state your name, and we'll try and answer your questions.
Oh, questions, comments, I guess?
Or comments, questions, comments.
Or concerns?
Or concerns.
Um, okay, so.
Or accolades.
You're a fantastic chairman.
There's the accolade. And for the record, tell everybody who you are.
My name's Malaney Gabb, I live at 770 Wire Road, so I'm Court's neighbor. That you can see there, the house there in the drawing. My concern is when he had the the land surveyed, he's, the whole property has moved 10 feet off to towards me. So therefore, it's now showing the property line running through the middle of the shed. So I, the, in my opinion, and I've got pictures here, that the whole surveying thing was, is off by 10 feet. And that my property, my shed's not actually on that property line. And that's what I think my concern is. And so the setbacks and all that, so it, to me, it like, it throws everything off and maybe that whole subdivision. So like, if that's shifted off 10 feet towards me, does that mean, you know, like on the other side of me? Didn't that shift, you know, by 10 feet, you know, like, so like, I've lost 10 feet and the neighbors on the other side of me, they've lost 10 feet, whereas the people on the other side of them, I guess Lance, I don't know his last name. He gained 10 feet, I mean, it's, it's like messed up the whole subdivision, I guess. So that's, that's what my concern is.
Mike, where year was that subdivision done?
Um, 1978, I believe, and.
No property pins at the corners?
No property pins at all the corners.
Did they find all the property pins?
And they all matched the original plan, so I don't, I don't see any basis for saying it's 10 feet off.
I've got photos and pictures here.
Have you done a survey?
Well, that's, well, since this has raised its ugly head, I've now been calling several surveyors and I can't get it done until about the first of October. So I am planning on having that done at that particular time.
That will tell the story, if you have it re-surveyed.
Yeah, but my thing is now I have to have it surveyed to go against what, what he's got surveyed. Because when the guy said, from Horizon, he, he actually said, oh, this is all off by 10 feet.
So, but I, I know you're saying you have to have it surveyed, but it looks like you would need to have had it done anyway because it looks like your, your shed is in the setback.
But my shed's what?
In the setback.
Yeah, um, but that's what, when, when I bought the property three years ago, the, we all went up and down the driveway, and I actually took pictures at that particular time and there was fresh ribbon actually hanging in the trees at that particular time. And so I'm going, you know, at that particular time, I went off of those markers that were there. And so, and I, and I, and I went out there with a tape measure and I'm like, okay, I'm, I'm good.
So, so the only thing you need to worry about is the property corners, the flags may not, may be irrelevant. They may be referencing something else, so going off the flags is not a good way to do it. So I guess what I'm saying is, even, even if the 10 feet is wrong as you claim, it still looks like your shed has to be moved.
Um, but that also have to be, there's other things that have, are there and have been there since a good 15 years. Which to me, that would, you know.
It was there before you bought it?
It was there way.
You'd have to go to the zoning board for appeals for a mislocated building.
Still say that again?
You'd have to go to the zoning board of appeals for a mislocated building.
Okay, so what does that mean? Can you tell me, go into that a little bit more for me?
What, what it is, is if you, somebody built something in the setback and it's not your fault, there is relief from that.
Oh, oh, okay.
But if, if you put the shed there, that's your fault. But if you bought the house and there was things in there and you didn't know that they were in the setback, that's different. So that would be something to discuss with these.
Oh, okay. Yeah, because there, there was already way, way before I bought the house.
What color were the ribbons that you were looking at?
Um, they, the ones that, well, they were pink.
Blue? Pink?
Pink. And there's some other orange ones, there, I did see one blue one. Does it matter what color the ribbons are?
Usually.
Usually.
What's it, what does that mean?
I mean, typically, blue flagging represents wetland delineation. And, you know, but it's not, it's not an industry standard.
Okay.
Pink or yellow or orange, it could be a survey traverse line, their control points versus the property line. So it depends on the surveyor that might have hung the flags. Property owners will go out and hang flags as well. So it might have been the previous owner thought that's where the property line was.
I think he would have done that, yeah, no, the previous owner wouldn't have done that.
It's a, it's a very long, straight line, so a lot of times it's difficult to project flagging on a long, straight line.
Exactly.
Especially when you go in between trees and.
Yeah, and, and Horizon, they didn't, they didn't even do the whole line. They only did like the, kind of about the front half, or not even the front half, the front corner, that's all they did.
Yeah, they, they located the back corners too, so they got all four corners. And so it's basically a straight line between the corner points they found. And that's what matches the original 78 subdivision plan as well.
The original?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, yeah, so I guess at this point, I, I am planning on having the, you know, it, it surveyed just to go from, go from there. Okay, but that, that's what my concern was.
You're all set?
Okay.
Any other questions or comments for anyone in the public? Any members of the board?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second, all those in favor? That is unanimous, this public hearing is now closed. The next public hearing this evening is Brookside Subdivision. You'll do it alone?
You getting shy, Jason? Get up.
See ya. So on the, so on the agenda. Sit back down, Jess. Would you like to tell us who you are and what you propose to do, please?
Jason LaVonty, developer.
Craig Burgess, civil engineer with Acorn Engineering.
Welcome.
So the project is a 25-lot, single-family subdivision situated on approximately 62 acres on the east side of Meeting House Road. 25 lots will be served by a single loop road, which is approximately 2,324 feet long. Each lot will be served by an individual well and septic system. Just stormwater wise, we are handling runoff through construction of two underdrained soil filters and one wooded buffer. A main DEP site law permit and Natural Resource Act permit is required because the project is proposing more than 14 lots on a parcel that's more than 30 acres in size, which triggers the site law through DEP. Additionally, roughly 23,000, just over 20,000 square feet of wetland will be disturbed as part of this project. The, the development has been focused on the south side of the site, which is the plan left on the screen here, which is the side of the site with not as much wetland. There's still wetland that we did our best to minimize impacts to with construction of the road and the lots. We actually have been able to secure a main DEP permit for, for the project. That came in just recently, so we now do have a DEP permit. We are still waiting the Army Corps permit for the wetland impacts. So working through that still with, with Army Corps. But at this point with the town, we are, we did get final subdivision completeness and we did receive comments from the town engineer, Mike, about the stormwater, which were pretty minor in nature. And we plan on making those changes and resubmitting back to the board for their review for hopefully final approval here sometime within the coming months.
Do you have any timeline or any feedback from Army Corps about how long, much longer?
It's, it's quite the process with Army Corps now. There's a couple new guys that are reviewing the applications and they're also becoming more familiar with the main rules. So we're still working through some of their comments and hopefully we can, we can get that permit here soon as well.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, comments, accolades from the audience? Feel free to get up to the podium, state your name.
Hi, good evening. Nelson Olivier, I'm the owner of the plot right here. A few, six acres. I bought the land from, I guess the owner is who's had this whole chunk. Uh, question, uh, not a concern, but a question. With the wetlands, how many leach fields do you expect will be above ground? So like mound systems?
Uh, hopefully none.
Okay.
We should try to get them flush.
Yeah, no, just wondering how that, how you might, that might impact, so I'm not, I'm not against it, just wondering. It's good for me to know and understand how the, how the properties will look because I'm concerned about the potential for building. And I'd love to make sure that everybody's actually happy with their leach field. So, very cool. A comment, love what you guys are doing, pass by. I've been, I've owned the plot for about 25 years and really enjoyed it and looks like you have a nice plan. Last question. How long do you think it will take to build the first place that will be ready for occupancy?
Uh, would you be a final approval, it'll probably take about six months to put the roads in and then probably about a year.
Thank you. No concerns.
Any other questions or comments for anyone in the public? For matter of record, we have a letter here dated in January from a John McMeaking questioning some of the issues in the habitats, but it's, matter of record, it's on file. Any questions or comments for any members of the board?
Move to close the public hearing.
All those in favor? Public hearing is now closed and we will workshop this later also. Next on the agenda is Barack Kimball Estates. Please come forward. You didn't want to leave.
That was my fault.
Just don't take one for it, appreciate it.
Mike, did you have comments for us on this, please?
Um, yes, the first item was just to consider comments from the public. As we addressed those at the time of the public hearing. Uh, next item was item two on the memo, and there are a couple of determinations for the board to make. Uh, we did, we received updated plans that address all of our matchups that we had from the previous week. Uh, but the board should consider not requiring an I and W letter as the subdivision was created in 1988.
You go to that, 1988?
Yeah, I think it was 78, okay. We probably have a title on the year there.
So it was 78?
Yes, I believe it was 78.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor? That is unanimous.
Uh, also, if the board would consider not requiring the location of 24-inch diameter trees?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor? That is unanimous.
Um, all monumentation is existing and is shown on the plan, but the board needs to confirm that the existing monumentation is suitable.
So move. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? That is unanimous.
Without those items and determinations made, we recommend that the planning board deem the application as being compliant.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor? That is unanimous.
Lastly, we do have a set of findings in your packet. It is an amendment to an existing subdivision, so we don't have to go through item per item. Uh, but it covers all the conditions in the 2021, the general condition for approval for subdivision and subdivision amendment. Um, the only thing that we are missing is actual surveyor stamp on the plans. So the board, if you're gonna, if you consider approving it tonight, you'd have to approve it with the condition that you would come, that the surveyor would come in on a later day, stamp and sign the plan and then we could release them, so they could record them at the registry. Uh, but you could consider approving it tonight, signing the plans that we have tonight and just we need to be able to release them until the surveyor stamps and signs.
So move.
Second.
Second, all those in favor? That is unanimous. So we will sign the plans tonight and then your surveyor has to come in. And once that's all done, you can pick them up.
Now you can move.
Good to see you guys.
You too, Jess.
Thank you.
The next item this evening is Brookside Subdivision. Would you like to tell everybody who you are again, please?
Jason LaVonty, developer. Craig Burgess, civil engineer.
Welcome. Mike, comments first?
Uh, the first item was again just to consider comments during the public hearing. Uh, there was only one person that spoke and I, I think again, those comments were probably addressed during the public hearing. Um, unless you've thought of anything else since then. Um, I remember outlines the items that have been addressed. As mentioned, the stormwater management plan was reviewed and it had various problems. Usually I make a lot of comments. I probably, no, but that was a very good and it was complicated drainage model to look at. Included all the offsite drainage, analyzed all the culverts crossing Meeting House roads. So it was a very good drainage.
Thank you.
Uh, and we stated the DEP permits granted, but you're waiting for Army Corps, so that's one outstanding item. The, there were some changes from the preliminary approval to a few of the septic locations based on wetland redelineation. We got the letter from the source scientist explaining why that redelineation was needed. We need final written approval from the fire chief on the proposed system that we put on the site. Also looking for the easement to the town for the fire system.
I got that today.
It should be very, very much like other ones you've done.
Copy check, so. Change your name, copy checks.
Yes, that one, yeah, we've got a well-established talking about that. Once we get that, I'll send my memo and everything up to the town attorney so they can do their final review. The buffer along Meeting House Road itself, we've looked at that quite a bit. In the packets, there was included that landscaping plan that I think was asked for the last meeting.
Only one page of it.
It is only one page.
It's only one page, there's like three pages of the landscape plan.
Okay, you want.
I wanted a full packet, but again, we simply get one, we'll get the full packet when we're done.
Yeah, yeah.
You, you sent one side where the sidewalk is, you didn't send between the two horseshoes and then on the other side. I want to just make sure that between the two horseshoes, as we discussed a long time ago.
Yeah.
We were going up. I can't see it. I got one page. We're almost there. We went down on pages, we gotta go up on pages.
Yeah, so the crosshatching in the middle of the horseshoe, that's the landscaping area, but yeah, it doesn't show the plantings on it, yes.
Yes, I know.
There is plantings in those areas.
Yeah.
Yeah, the other.
I'm aware, I just want to see them, just to make sure they're still there.
I just want, for the record, Mike just put Craig on a pedestal and I would just chop him down.
Yes, I am. For the record, again, like anything at work, you can get a gold star, but it only takes five minutes to lose it.
Wow.
You don't want to work for me, no.
There have been no changes since you last seen it.
Well, you can show us.
I think in the past, we've discussed the wetlands on the lots quite a bit and that there'd be specific deed restrictions. Every deed that notes that there's wetland on that particular lot. I don't think we detailed on the plans yet what type of signage was going to be required. Uh, but typically require, you know, you post something, you've done it before in all the subdivisions, posted on nearby trees. I knew the trees would have wetland flagging on it saying, you know, wetland, no cut buffer.
Yeah.
You know, uh.
We get all the little green, we use the green stakes and we bolt the signs on those and we make them up at the shop and then just go out there and hang them like every 50 feet.
Yeah, generally every 50 feet or so is what we.
And it's gonna go on the deeds, right?
Yes, yeah, so we want to make sure that's, I don't think we even note on the plan yet saying that, but it'd be similar to some of our other typical notes we put on the plan. We did have a couple of compliance items for the board to vote on. I thought we had done the open space as suitable in the past already, but Jim couldn't find record of it in the minutes. Uh, so one item is for the board to deem the open space proposed as suitable.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor? That is unanimous.
Uh, the next one is, it's in the ordinance, this is all a private street. All the driveways will be off the private street. So shared driveways don't apply, but you need to take a vote to say that shared driveways will not be required.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor? That is unanimous as well.
Uh, now that the plans show granite bounds at all the corners as the board previously determined, just to take a vote saying that the proposed monumentation is suitable.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor? That is unanimous.
And then we're just recommending continuing for 60 days. Thinking we're still working on DEP, but Army Corps may be that one.
How long will they make it until they get approval from Army Corps?
Could you ask?
Yeah.
Until they receive approval from Army Corps plus 14 days so they can make a meeting.
Second.
All those in favor? That is unanimous.
Mike, I just had one question on this because it relates back to the discussion we had a couple weeks back about the ordinance. What is this sidewalk? Is it paved?
Says paved.
It's paved, yes.
Paved.
Thank you.
Uh, my quick question on the, the discussion, I know in your notes that you had sent over, uh, you had mentioned, you know, some of the lots, we should do like a little 10-foot drainage improvement along the edge of the road.
Yes, there were a couple on, on, it was on this side of the subdivision, so easements all the way through.
Yeah.
But on this side, a couple of the outlets for the culverts, I think that one and that one, didn't have any easements on those lots. And the other two spots I was recommending was, you have a, you have.
Yeah, that was the second question.
Show of the firm at this intersection.
Yep.
Um, and that one, because the culvert goes from the private office to the county, then she goes to the forum. The other spot was, there's an existing cross culvert here that you're not impacting at all, but through your drainage analysis is undersized and from about a comments, if the road is flooded in that area. So eventually the town will need to, we'll take that, although it's not a big culvert. So I was recommending you're requesting that you give an easement to the town around that. So if the town does do the work, you have easement together in there. Okay.
Everybody.
But now, your, your first question, where you have a couple of easements, I think they were the outlet, outlets of each of those culverts. There might have been a slope somewhere too that needed easement. Oh, yeah, right at the intersection of that driveway, you had easements coming down the side of the road for grading and for culverts. It just were, it tied into the driveway that needed additional easement there too. And those will reach to the HOA though, not to the town, because it's a private street.
Right, so I might just do, what were your thoughts, I might just do a 10-foot strip around the whole entire road.
Oh, yeah, could do that, sure.
And then this way here, the transformers are all in it and everything, so we can do a drainage utility.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so then this way here, we're not sitting there saying this lot, not this one, then this one. Instead of having this checkerboard thing going.
Sure.
I was just thinking, probably just do a continuous one all the way around, just to get some.
Yeah, I think we had, I think Gray Trail did that, I think. Yeah, Gray Trail Phase 2, the one that, yeah, we're involved with the approval of it, but.
Yeah.
I think that's what they did on that one.
Yeah, so, okay, so that's what we're doing the next one.
Mike, getting back to sidewalks again, who's maintaining those?
Uh, the final sidewalk location was in the town right of way. So back then, I did check old notes from the plan and correspondence I have with the town attorney. And if it's in the town right of way, the town would be responsible for maintaining it. We're not obligated to plow it because there's no federal money involved with it yet, so we don't have to do winter maintenance. The HOA can have the option of maintaining it as well, but we can't require it if it's on public property.
So should that just be spelled out in the, so there's no confusion?
Yes.
In the HOE documents?
Yes.
Anything else this evening? I think that's it, we got Mike's list for our.
Oh, I, I have one question.
Sure, one.
I think for, or clarification, I, I started reviewing the public easement and it's for the trails on the open space, so there's a proposed trail here, there's proposed trails here as well. The way you access these trails is, is through this strip here.
Yeah.
So to get to that strip, there'd have to be a public easement across part of the roadway too?
Yes.
And that wasn't specified, so that was one of the items that I had on my list to discuss.
For my attorney to make something up so the public would be able to access to public or the private code.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that, that will be in.
We did that on the Parker Ridge.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, so the language we used on Parker Ridge can be copied.
Hold on, no, just give us some time.
And money.
And money.
All right.
You're all set?
It's good, guys.
Thanks, have a good night. The next item on the agenda this evening will be 526 Post Road subdivision. I believe we need a motion to receive this site plan subdivision pre-op.
Move to receive site plan subdivision pre-op for 526 Post Road subdivision.
For a second, all those in favor? That is unanimous. Welcome. And for the record, would you like to tell everybody who you are, please?
I am Bill Wallace with Wallace Engineering.
I'm Chris Benro, the property owner.
Welcome again.
Thank you.
Would you like to tell us what you propose to do, please? Would you like to tell us what you propose to do, please?
I would. Thank you, sir. We are here on five twenty-six Post Road. We have a eight point one five acre parcel. It's T-shaped, as you can see on the screen up there. Um, it's in the general business district. On the front portion of the site is what was once the Morrison Center. As you probably all know where that is. Um, we have, uh, as well as being in that general business district. We have, um, two very small portions of the property that are with the, um, rural district, which is in the northwestern corner of the property. There's a small section that just doesn't happen to follow the property line. And down on the bottom of that tee, if you will, is a section of shortland overlay zone. Comes off of Stevens Brook, um, just seventy-five foot setback. The military center, um, so it was the Morrison Center and the associated parking that's in the front. Is the, is developed up until about the end of the parking lot there. And then beyond that, it's completely wooded, um, with deciduous and, and evergreen growth. Um, adjacent to the lot or around the lot, to the north side of the Morrison Center is the Lighthouse Church of the Nazarene. And there's a summer built park and development, which is up on the very north part of the tee. To the south, or to the west, rather, is land, undeveloped land that's, um, owned by Jorgensen. And then the Jorgensen Antiques is down on the bottom corner of the parcel down there. Based on the net residential density calculations, we can support fifteen units, um, on the property. And that's, the proposed project actually has fifteen single-family condo buildings on it. That are proposed on the back half of the property. There's a thousand fifty foot light of way with the cul-de-sac. And that access drive is, is aligned just off of the, off of the parking lot to sort of provide a buffer, uh, from the, from the parking area. On that edge coming down to the, to the cul-de-sac. Cul-de-sac's been designed to meet the, the town standard. Uh, for parking, obviously, we have that parking lot there for the, for the existing facility. But each unit will have a garage and, and an additional parking space, um, as needed for, for appropriate parking for the, for the project. The utilities will be sewer and water coming off of Route One. There are, um, services that go to the, what, to the existing building. Um, those will be extended back into the property along the center line of the driveway or along the driveway. Um, we'll bring in underground power as well into the, into the units. Um, we do have a dedicated open space, which is shown on the plan. It's kind of hard to see, but it is, kind of wraps around the, the outer edges of the parcel. And stormwater is expected to be sort of a series based on the way this topography works. It's a series of underdrain soil filters and detention basins as necessary. Um, there were some questions that Mike and staff brought up here. Um, on the open space, we were a little shy. I think we grabbed net resident rather than, and when we did the calculation, we didn't do total lot area. So we can adjust that accordingly. Um, we checked that already. And we can get that thirty-five percent that's necessary, or thirty-five or fifty.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five, okay. Fifty in my notes here. Um, and the buffer, I think we had shown, um, thirty-five feet, thirty-one, fifteen feet, so we'll, we'll adjust that down. There is a wetland, a small finger of wetland right there. Um, we anticipate we'd actually, um, filling that wetland. It's a pretty small wetland finger. And the, the, uh, area of it was in the thousand square foot range. So we're in a relatively small wetland fill. Um, traffic, we know we need to evaluate that. We've got a traffic engineer on board looking at, looking at traffic. They have looked at site distances. Those are obviously appropriate and, and as necessary, um, based on that existing entrance. And we will be required to do a stormwater permit for this, uh, through the main DEP. It looks like, based on the amount of impervious area, so we do know we need to do that as well. So that's what we have for, for a project. I'm happy to field any questions.
Bill, just a couple of questions. What's the purpose of having the other entrances off the, the parking lot?
Um, I think it's just circulation. We don't necessarily need to.
So are you, you'd be relying on that parking lot for overflow parking for these houses? Is that, no?
No.
Okay.
No, it's just sort of circulation in and out of the parking area.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the other item you mentioned is you were gonna extend the, um, existing sewer. Existing sewer that goes in there is only six inch. Uh, sewer department's gonna require you to run eight inch, so you're probably gonna have to go back to the main to eight inch, just a heads up.
Okay, we'll talk with that through with them.
Okay.
We did get, um, I can.
Yeah, capacity.
Yeah, we did get capacity letters from them and those came in. Mike, I can, I can get these to you. But we did get capacity for sewer and water from the, from the districts.
Mike, do you have any more comments or questions for them at this point in time?
No, just, uh, we should schedule the sidewalk and get out there and get eyes on the ground.
Is the existing building still gonna be a commercial entity of some sort?
It's anticipated that that's, that's the case, yeah. Not really, not hundred percent sure at this point.
So what we need to do is schedule the sidewalk. So we're gonna have an old flag.
Soon can you get there?
A little week from Thursday night. I was gonna say, see you tomorrow.
Can't do that. Did you receive both site plan and subdivision, or just the site?
I said, I read the whole title when I made the motion.
Oh, excellent, okay.
We received both.
Yep.
Just double checking.
One of these days you'll pay attention to us.
So Thursday, August twenty-eighth?
I can't make that date, but. Getting it for like six, I can get the.
Twenty-sixth.
You can't do it either?
Twenty, yeah, twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth at six.
At six, yeah.
You can do it or you can't.
I can.
Can you make it?
Okay, make a motion to schedule the sidewalk Thursday, August twenty-eighth at six P M.
If you could have it all marked out.
Um, center, center line and units?
Yes. Motion been seconded. All those in favor? That is unanimous.
Great, thank you.
We'll see you then.
All right.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is Congdon's Donuts. I believe you said earlier, Mike, that.
Yes, they, um, they wish to postpone, postpone.
Postpone this?
Yes, to postpone it. We did our memo and they wanted to check with the original owner on some of those items first. Um, I don't know if they can, or not, no.
I don't see anybody here, no.
No, they were requesting to have the application received, but postponed it and grant a sixty day extension.
You don't have to be here?
Or, or you can take no action and just postpone it.
Take no action and wait for them to get everything else in order. The next item on the agenda will be Founder's Park Community Center. And for the record, Dave McKenzie is stepping off the board. You have comments for us on this, Mike?
Uh, yes, we had a public hearing on this previously, done workshops on it before as well. Uh, the memo, we had a list of items to be addressed. Um, the applicants addressed them all. One of the changes from the last meeting was, uh, we, you know, there was a whole discussion on the patio in front, blue colors. Get a, a story about, you know, up in Kinnabunk, the rink up there did have an incident when a car drove through it. So, um, not that the applicant knew about that story, but it's happened in Kinnabunk. But they removed the whole patio in front, is gonna keep it all grass to make sure that no one can mistake it for a curb cut. So resolution to that was just to not have anything that looked like a curb cut out here at all. As a result, they are adding a fire lane, um, because that was one of the means of fire protection. Emergency services can get in the, the whole backside of the building as well. But on the front, that's where a fire would get fought from, so a fire lane would be installable on the front.
So there'll be no parking fire line signs with that?
Yep, striped and no parking signs, been added to the plan. So, yeah, that's the most significant plan change since the last meeting and the public hearing. Uh, but it was specifically to address those concerns that were on the front. And the fire chief, acting fire chief, has reviewed that and came up with that as a suggestion, uh, to meet his requirements. One item for the board to consider, we didn't do it at the last meeting, but the code off, I know we discussed it. But the code office did give a recommended parking requirement for that use, because that use wasn't in our table. Um, and at the last meeting, we discussed that, uh, but the board never voted to accept the recommended parking requirement as presented by the code office.
So move.
Second.
Is there a second? All those in favor? That is unanimous.
Uh, we didn't focus. Uh, there is a note on the plan, uh, that requires that prior to a building permit, uh, being issued. That the site plan with the school has to be amended, uh, to reflect the connection through the parking. Uh, so we put a condition on the plan regarding that.
Does that involve us, Mike, or is that just for the school department?
That would be the school. Um, it's, it's minor enough that it's either gonna be staff review committee. Or it might even just be code office and planning office approval, because the square footage is really small that's involved with it. So, yeah, Mike, it probably won't come back to the planning board. It'll probably be staff review. With, with those items discussed, though, we're recommending the planning board to consider the application as compliant.
So move. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? That is unanimous.
And lastly, this, this is an amendment to the existing site plan for the town hall site. So we don't have to go through every paragraph in the findings of fact, but it covers section one forty-five seventy-five, paragraphs A through N. Which are all the criteria for site plan approval for parking, buffering, uh, all those items that were addressed in the past and voted on by the board. So we are recommending the planning board approve the site plan and assign the plans and findings at the end of the meeting.
So move.
Second.
Second. All those in favor? That is unanimous. You're all set?
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Just give me Mike. He's gonna get the key.
The next item on the agenda?
We think you're all spoiled, Jim.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, the accolades. Majestic Regency.
Yes, this, this was an application the board voted on at the last meeting to give one more extension to. I thought that extension would carry him to two meetings, but because of the holiday weekend, it would only be this meeting. So I communicated the wrong information to the applicant there.
I think I asked you if you wanted sixty days and you kept saying, no, we don't need it.
Well, no, this, this, this was one, the board was specific that no more extensions after that one, so that, that was a.
Well, then I guess he's, didn't make it tonight, is what he told us.
No, they're not here tonight and they, but they did hire, uh, Sebego, their, uh, company to finish the plan. Because this was an application that was started by Go Net Speed. Uh, but there were site plan issues that needs, still be, even though they withdrew, they still, site plan issues they had to resolve. Um, so they did finally go into contract with the company that was working for Go Net Speed, but they needed to do that separately. But the board did say that we wouldn't grant any more extensions, but they are asking for a sixty day extension from ten.
I do have one issue. I drove, happened to been driving down Old County Road. And, uh, right where the three propane tanks are out back, somebody cut all the trees out so they could get into them from the backside street. So there's no buffer there.
From, from, from Old County?
Mm-hmm. So there's no buffer, no buffer covering the trees there at this point, so.
That was an area where the board said that there were a bunch of invasive vines that they said, you know.
They cut them out so they could get into the tanks.
It wasn't just the vines, are you sure?
They told me they could make invasive vines over here.
Right.
It's the only.
Getting access to that.
But it's the only place on the whole backside road that anything's been touched.
Ah.
And that's the building towards the left-hand side of the property. Looking down Old County, not where we were, but down further where the three tanks were.
Oh, I mean, oh, really?
Yeah.
Ah.
So we might wanna address that. I mean, you just can't cut the buffer out. And they did.
Vines, okay. Invasive's okay, but, yeah.
So, Mike, now they're asking for sixty days. We gave them thirty, which you thought would get them two meetings. So I'll give you a fourteen day extension so they can get to the next meeting.
It, it's because of the holiday, it would have to be like.
Twenty-one?
Twenty or twenty-five, something like that, yeah.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-five.
But they're, they're not gonna have a, they're not gonna have a plan ready for that meeting, though. Because their engineer said they, they can't get it done until October, I believe.
So then why are we granting an extension at all?
My question exactly, is that you don't have to grant another extension. Uh, the only downside to the applicant is they'll have to pay an application fee to come back. But the original application fee was actually paid by Go Net Speed.
Well, how long has this been dragging on?
A year.
A year.
Well, most, most of that was Go Net Speed.
I, I know, but it's still been a year that we've been playing with this. So I think at this point, the application should just die and make them do it the right way again.
And make a motion that we do not grant an extension.
Second. Is there a second? All those in favor? That is unanimous. The next item on the agenda is TNN Realty Warehouse Building.
Can I just go back to that a minute, too?
Sure.
Mike's question, under the new wording, did, were they right? They, weren't they required to be here?
Uh, that's for subdivisions, not for site plans. But the last one, too, was a site plan, so they weren't actually required to be here to ask for an extension. But we should add that to site plan ordinance, too.
Sounds like a good idea.
Should be for all.
For the record, would you like to tell everybody who you are, please?
Good evening. My name's Austin Fagan. I'm here with BH two M, representing the TNN Realty.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Mike, you have comments first?
Uh, yes, at the last meeting, we had some completeness items to be addressed. They had a proposed septic location, had a proposed well location. A couple of parking spaces they were shy on, so parking spaces have been added. Uh, we had a question, there's, there's a temporary trail that goes off the backside of the property and connects to the adjacent property. We asked if that was gonna remain, if we upgraded. I give the answer is they're gonna remove it, actually. Um, so they provided all the information that we asked for, uh, and to make it complete. So we are recommending the planning board even complete and schedule a public hearing for the next meeting.
So move. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? That is unanimous.
I agree.
Sorry to take up so much of your time.
I think I'm, I'll give this one.
Yes, sir.
Question for you, Austin. Um, the lot next door, um, was that supposed to be paved or was that originally supposed to remain gravel?
How's the gravel parking area?
It's paved.
Next door is paved?
Yeah.
It's paved now.
Yeah.
Is it like in the last few weeks?
Yeah.
It was of last week, last week sometime.
It was either long or it was.
Okay.
It can gravel it, but if it gets paved, they have to stripe it.
Yeah, I mean, in terms of impervious cover, it won't be any different between gravel or pavement. But if there is a, you know, some item that needs to be updated, be happy to take care of that as part of this.
Yeah, we did, I did notice that driving by to the transfer station a few years ago. It was the first I knew about it, when I saw it.
Do we even have a striping plan for it?
Yeah.
Oh, there was a striping plan?
Yeah.
We all set with that one?
Every day. Sorry.
We all set with that one?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Next item this evening is Walsley by the Sea Phase Five.
Austin Fagan with BH two M, here with Wesley Palmer, Executive Director of the Preachers Aid Society.
Welcome.
Thanks, Jim.
Mike, you have comments for us on this one?
Uh, yes, we do have, uh, we, this one had an extension until we got the E P approval, which we just received. Couple of weeks ago, I think, a couple of years ago. Uh, so we went through to finalize the findings of fact and sure we did find some areas that the board hadn't delivered on. There's no other question or outline to those. The first one was that the, um, monumentation, uh, to be considered as suitable.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor? That is unanimous.
Uh, a couple of other items we have in the memo have been addressed. Uh, next item for the board to consider voting on is to recognize or accept the residential cluster, lot size setbacks and street project.
So move. So move.
Second.
All those in favor? That is unanimous.
Uh, next item is Lot Ten. Lot Ten exceeds the three to one ratio for length to width, but the whole backside of the property is restricted from any development due to the drainage, she's been in the drainage pond. So the board discussed it, but we couldn't find a vote on it, so the board will consider voting to waive the three to one ratio requirement.
Move to waive.
Second.
All those in favor? That is unanimous.
Uh, stormwater management plan is good. There were some minor changes to the design sheets that have been made and provided to us. Next item for the board to consider is none of the open space changed. The open space is still the same from the original approval, but now there's new lots. So we just asked the board to vote to confirm the open space remains suitable.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor? That is unanimous.
And similar to one of the earlier agenda items, the board needs to vote to consider that there are no shared driveways to be required.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor? That is unanimous.
Mike, are there any wetlands on any of those lots?
No.
No.
That whole property was very simple, very easy to work with.
Yeah, not for stormwater, because good soil.
Stormwater wasn't easy. Yeah, it's amazing, there's no wetland in there at all.
Uh, one of the items we asked the the applicant to address and they added a note to the plan, there'd be no EDUs for any of the dwelling units on the subdivision, because they are right at the maximum number of dwelling units that would trip, that you couldn't do a dead end anymore. So EDUs do generate traffic, that is a criteria of the ordinance. So they have added a note stating there'd be no accessory dwelling units for any of the houses out there.
Make a motion to find the application compliant?
Second.
All those in favor? That is unanimous.
And this is an amendment to an existing subdivision, so we don't have to go through item by item, but there is a twenty-four page findings of fact that go through all of section two oh two twelve and two oh two two. We recommend that planning board vote on the plan and sign the plans and findings at the end of the meeting.
So move.
Second.
Second, all those in favor? That is unanimous.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I do wanna say thank you. I've been here many times and this is the last that we can do on the land that we own. And I just appreciate, I recognize many faces from the first time I was here. And I I really just wanna say thank you to you who served in this way and make this possible.
You're welcome.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
You got a nice property down there, you guys do a great job.
All right, so the the plans, we'll pick them up another day.
Um, tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah, we'll we'll give them time tonight, we'll scan them and send you a P D A file home and then come up with it.
Sounds good to me. Thank you all.
Have a good night.
Thanks.
Night.
Mike, under other business?
Uh, we had, just in case the board had any thing to talk about with the ordinance changes, we have the joint public hearing with the board of selectmen on September second. I wonder if you had any thoughts on it in preparation for that. I did, on the table in front of you, I did a little handout because the board of selectmen did have a question parking requirements for EDUs and whether the proposed ordinance met the the law, L D two thousand and three or not. So I did a little informational piece of information for you. Where I quote the actual language within the law. I quote our ordinance, which we require parking space for each bedroom that's in a dwelling. And the law, the law, in which, in my opinion, is very clear, you just can't require additional parking requirements beyond what you require for a dwelling. So our current ordinance is you need a parking space for each bedroom. And even if you add a E D U, that's another bedroom and and we can require another parking space. There was a guidance document that the estate put out from the main department of economic and community development. And within that document, they say, right in that document, that this is just an interpretation of the law and not legally binding or intending to serve as a substitute for the language of L D two thousand and three. So in that guidance document, they're recognizing that this is just their opinion and not, you know, not making new law. Within that document, they provided a diagram of what's not permitted and what's permitted. And if you just look at that diagram, it doesn't appear that we can require additional parking for an E D U. But what this document doesn't address is how our ordinance is written. So it's just, you know, typical ordinance and our ordinance, before we changed it, was you just needed two spaces for every dwelling, pretty much regardless of bedrooms. We did have a provision, when you got to a fifth bedroom, you had to add a a parking spot. So ours was unique that way originally. But what they're saying is if your ordinance requires two spaces for a dwelling, then you can't, you know, add anymore for an accessory dwelling. But our ordinance doesn't say that. It it says a parking space for every bedroom. So I don't think this diagram applies to our particular ordinance.
I agree with you, I think we've been saying that all along.
Yes.
So you'll have that on?
But I'll be providing this to the board of selectmen as well, so they have it for informational purposes.
Yeah, I don't know if anybody watched the selectmen's meeting, but I got a lot of pushback on the length of time for people staying in either E D Us or the.
They did?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Well, we recommended six months, they changed it to twelve months. I watched the meeting and then that's what's in there right now is twelve months, but we originally sentenced them at six months.
Right, but they they're, they haven't changed anything yet. Who gave them the pushback? There was, I think it was, I think it was Jim, you were there, Mike, do you remember?
There was some discussion on like visiting nurses and.
Visiting nurses and doctors and stuff like that.
Our entities that, you know, it might serve a good purpose if they're only here, you know, four or six months or three to four months. So they, yeah, there was conversation on there might be some particular tenants that wouldn't be here for twelve months, but aren't short-term rentals either. That might be good to accommodate.
So here's the problem, so somebody comes in, they go to the the beach and they rent a short A D U on the beach for six months in summer. That just defeated the purpose of what these are supposed to be.
Yeah, as far as being affordable units or.
Yeah, I mean, the idea of these, the idea is they're supposed to be affordable units giving us housing, okay?
Right.
So all of a sudden, you're looking at at saying, okay, we wanna bring it down to six months. So you bring it down to six months and people say, okay, now we got a way around it. We can turn around and put an E D U on a house on the beach and rent it for six months days. That defeats the purpose of what we want.
And there'd be a market for that.
There's gonna be a huge market for it. I'll tell you that right now, there'd be a huge market. People build an E D U on their house on Drake's Island and rent it out for the entire summer to somebody. And a package deal.
It's very difficult to carve out a specific exception for.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see how you're gonna be able to.
Yeah, I don't know how I would begin to write that.
And then how are you gonna control, how you how you also gonna control that they're not, they're not doing it for for a week or two at a time? They're just gonna say it's a six month rental.
Yeah. So I I think, you know, we all ought to be prepared for that when we go to the the public hearing.
Jim was the one that was was behind bringing it up to twelve months to begin with.
At the original public hearing?
Yeah.
The other thing, do they figure out what they wanna do for the sidewalks? That was the part I caught.
The the big thing is that 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 one of the members that wants to do paving, which is, should not be an option because paving doesn't hold up. You know, a good sidewalk will last you forty years. There's, you know, there's no question about it. Then the question came up, well, what if stampcrete or regular cre- regular concrete? And the the problem being that I think someone sees a stampcrete and they look at maybe McDonald's or something for stampcrete, not realizing that there's specific patterns that you can get for stampcrete that don't have the the seams in them that you're talking about. And I'll be happy to bring in a catalog to show you all the patterns you can get, but I, again, it's it's the the, I think the selectmen don't have a lot of knowledge about it, so if we can educate them more about it, I think we stand a better chance of getting them to agree with what we've recommended.
The discussion also included adding bike lanes to subdivisions that join two streets, right? Now, I don't know how that works, what are you gonna? Contracted to build bike lanes, you're gonna take the property away from the owners?
You can't tell the people that they have to put a bike lane in a in a sub-private road.
Look, here here's the thing, that that they did a study back in, it was either twenty or twenty-one, and they said one percent, less than one percent of Mayners commute to work by bike. And then it was less than two percent on a regular basis, on a weekly basis, uses biking as recreation. So why are we catering catering to to pedestrians are a lot more, you have you have a lot more people walking to work, you have a lot more people walking than you have bike lanes. The first order of business should be pedestrian walkways or sidewalks.
What came up on the discussion for the plan for sidewalks under the.
And currently, the sidewalk ordinance as it's written doesn't require bike lanes. It just, when the, it does require sidewalks and when the sidewalks are designed, they would be designed from the viewpoint as there could be a future bike lane there. So as far as the distance and width off the center line of the road, that can make a difference. But right now, it's written up not requiring a bike lane be constructed, but that's a sidewalk be constructed with with the viewpoint of there could be a a bike lane in the future.
In a subdivision?
Uh, no, on Route one, yeah.
So you're talking about taking seven feet. Four foot for the sidewalk, three foot for the bike lane?
Or that the sidewalk be constructed, if a development comes in on on Route one or within the sidewalk area, that when they're, we're looking at the plan to improve the plan, that the location of the sidewalk be positioned so that a bike lane could be added in the future.
To really accommodate the seven feet.
Yes.
Some zone of the bike lane is a three footer.
So you're taking seven feet of people's property?
Potentially, if they have to provide an easement for that sidewalk and the sidewalk gets pushed back.
And is that on site, is that on site plans or is that on everything?
Well, if it's on, if it's on Route one or Sanford Road within the sidewalk area, it would be a site plan or a subdivision. But if we did have, you know, a project come in before the big Route one project happened and we had them build a sidewalk, it would be a shame that that sidewalk then gets, a renewed sidewalk gets ripped up and moved back two feet to accommodate a bike lane.
So really, we're telling, but really, we're telling five twenty-six post road that they need to plan for a sidewalk and bike lane in front of their property.
Yes.
If we go down the path we're doing.
Yep.
Well, yeah.
Right, there are new development on Route one.
That new development now, that they they should be putting that sidewalk in now. Whether they put the the bike lane in or not, I don't know, but there should be a sidewalk by now.
Yeah.
Yeah, the the discussion on required and on subdivisions, they did know that that wasn't part of the proposed ordinance and that would be something that would be have, be added to two oh two twelve as a requirement and within our street standards too.
Thank you.
Um, the other thing under other business we had was just on that we had a subdivision that was in default for not putting the finished course of payment in, uh, and that is completed now, so they're out of default and that developer can come back, get a future meeting for the other subdivision, the Mia Lane.
Who's the driver?
Uh, was, uh, Kevin Hills Group. Uh, they did the Willoughby subdivision and they're currently before the board for the Mia Lane subdivision on Burnhill Road.
Yep.
We suspended review, all review of that subdivision until this default is resolved.
And it's all taken care of?
So now they can come back.
Have you inspected it already?
I haven't, I got pictures of it sent to me, but I haven't gone out and looked. From the pictures, I could tell the shoulders aren't done yet, but the requirement was the paving get done by a certain deadline. I'm gonna retain performance guarantee monies, of course, until the shoulders get done as well.
Mr. Jordan, time findings of fact and plans?
Second.
All those in favor? That is unanimous. Good night, everyone, and thank you.